Good afternoon, everybody. As folks are rolling in, please have a seat if there's one available. If not, we can...
I just want to say we are bringing more speaker cards. We're out of speaker cards.
Oh, okay. Fabulous. More speaker cards are on their way. Don't worry. It'll take us some time to get there. All right. So we'll begin the Rules and Open Government Committee meeting for the whole on today, Wednesday, September 18th. We are -- we have a quorum. I'm joined by council members Arenas, Davis, and Camus. Vice Mayor Jones is in Washington, D.C., right now. We'll begin with a review of the final agenda for September 24th. I'll ask my colleagues if they have any changes to the printed agenda beginning on pages three and four.
Mayor, if you will note, we have a closed session starting at 9:30. You do have an evaluation of an appointee that morning. Our office is -- only at this point has one, maybe two matters as well. So unless it's the will of the Rules Committee, we're leaving it at 9:30 unless you'd like to start at 9:00.
No, I think they'll probably fine. They're just two items beyond the evaluation. Should be okay. Okay, great. Thanks, Ed. All right. Onto pages five and six. Oh, thank you, Sean. Appreciate it. Any changes? Pages seven and eight. Pages nine and 10. This is obviously going to be a very heavy day. So I'm not sure there's even any value in setting a time certain since I think many of these housing items will be -- will all have a lot of public input on. Pages 11 and 12? Okay. I don't -- I have a card on this agenda item as Gabriel Hernandez. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. I just see the agenda for September 24th. I was just gonna request that the committee allow that to be timed certain after like 4:00 or 5:00 so that community members might be able to pick up their children, come after work to participate in the process. We've been involved in the process for over about a year and a half, two years now in terms of different housing issues and agenda items and stuff. And so we would like to participate in that process. So we're just making sure that it be timed certain after 4:00 or 5:00 so that people could come after work.
Mr. Hernandez, which of the items you're referring to? You refer to several of them.
4.2. It's 19-822, the housing crisis work plan.
The work plan update?
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't mind moving that toward the end.
Maybe after you guys have dinner.
But I don't know. Yeah. We don't have an evening session this day, although I suspect our afternoon session may go quite late. I guess the concern is this is all kind of wrapped up together, Dave.
Yeah. So just to remind the committee of the strategy here. So we've consolidated all of these housing and homeless-related issues on one agenda, kept the agenda pretty clear so that we can focus on these issues. And so this is actually day one of this. We'll do another day similar to this in November. Certainly understand the community's interest in participating, but the objective here is to try to tackle all of these in one go.
So if it's any consolation, I think I can say if folks show up after 5:00 or 6:00, I'm guessing we're still going to be at it.
I would agree.
The challenge is all of these items, I know, are of some community interest, whether we're doing with regard to affordable housing. I think the homeless and affordable housing issues are kind of throughout many of them.
So a suggestion might be is, you know, just another window of public comment, you know, at 4:00 or 5:00 or something.
Yeah. I'd be happy to reopen public comment after 5:30 if, for some reason, we've exhausted it on these items. Maybe that would be the best thing to do. We could stop council deliberation, go back to public comment. Councilman Arenas, you have a suggestion?
Well, I was hoping that if we considered these all on a slate, if they're all together, then whether they are -- somebody speaking on 4.2 or 4.5, if the idea is that all of these are going to be heard or they create a collective picture, that if they're all heard at the same time, that whether somebody comes in and talks about 4.2 or 4.5 or 4.3, it's going to take a while before we're finished with those items.
I don't think we'll -- it'd be quite that cohesive in that the subjects are discreet and we will actually have different staff members involved. I think we'll have housing staff involved with most of them, but there'll be staff from different departments, PBC, economic development, kind of involved with different parts of it. So we will need discrete approvals on some of these items, unfortunately.
Yeah. We can think a little bit, though, how, you know, I agree, but, you know, perhaps the CAFR and the housing crisis work plan update may be something we would consider consolidating. But the points we're taking, I guess maybe could we accelerate the eBay item, that's 4.8, take that up before the housing items? So that will enable us at least to address that and give the community a better chance of being here for the rest of the discussion.
We can. We can.
You have concerns about that one, Dave?
No. No.
The other item, Jackie's, I'll turn to the housing department. I, you know, when we thought about it, there was a natural break between all the housing items that are development-related. That might be what the community was wanting to come to. We could flip and do the consolidated plan and the homeless item first, and then all the housing crisis work plan items then follow right after that.
I'm sorry. So we put which one first?
The consolidated plan.
Yeah.
And then our homeless piece.
CAFR.
And then the rest of the agenda would follow with the housing crisis and all those items follow underneath it.
Okay.
The sequencing, that's important to us.
So Jackie, just if I could ask you a question. I kind of was anticipating some interest from the public to kind of comment on the homeless plan, the items you were suggesting putting first?
The consolidated plan first and then the homeless plan.
Yeah. In your report. Yeah. The truth is, all these things are going to be of interest to the public.
More -- you were mostly interested in the housing crisis.
That's a hearing on it. Yeah.
Could I just suggest that I would take out of order 4.8? Accelerate that. Gives us the best chance for the public to be able to participate in the housing items.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So we'll take 4.8 after consent.
And Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So would you still reopen public comment so that if there's folks who are coming in the latter part of the day?
Yeah. Why don't we say that if we can, obviously, we can only reopen public comment on those items which we have not voted. Most of these are just for the receipt of the report, but if there is some public comment that causes someone to want to reconsider their vote, they could then raise that issue and we could go back and revisit.
So it's clear that you could consolidate the discussion of all of them at one time. However, in most of these cases, you'll have to take action individually. So once your discussion is over, you should be going down the list and identifying what your action is with regard to each of the items. And if you've taken action on one of them and people still want to speak, you can allow that person to speak and then you'll have to decide, do you want to do a motion to reconsider the action that was previously approved based on the comments that were made? You don't have to reconsider if it's simply comments. However, if the comments do change the mind of someone who voted in the affirmative, then you can reopen it to amend that particular action.
Okay. I think we got it.
Explain?
Okay. So we could put on the agenda at 5:30. Well, let's see here. We take a 6:00 o'clock break for dinner typically. Hmm, let me think about this. Yeah, let me find a time after 5:00 when we take a break from council deliberation to return to public comment if we have not heard all of public comment by that point. All right. Is there a motion?
Move forward.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Second agenda item, second agenda is October 1st. Pages four and five, are there any changes? Pages six and seven?
Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
On item number 3.3, the planning commission appointment, I would prefer to only fill the one vacancy because I don't -- I personally didn't think that we're going to have two vacancies at the time this was done. I would have actually picked more people to be interviewed had I known that there were two vacancies instead of one. I'd prefer us having two separate processes. And in fact, we got criticized for trying to rush the last one. And so I would like, I'd prefer to have only one vacancy being discussed on that date.
Let me ask the clerk if, okay, so we each selected, I think, three names, right, for one position? If we had two positions, how many names would we be selecting?
Four.
Is there any way we could perhaps just, rather than doing this twice?
I could repoll.
We could repoll and keep the three we got?
But I need people to be on time. Like, I need people to respond on time.
Yes.
Usually, it takes about two weeks after the deadline for me to get all -- the deadline that I give, it takes about two weeks to actually get all the names.
Yeah.
So if I can make sure everybody can respond to me by Friday, then we can do that.
Got it.
Yeah.
Friday of this week?
Yes. Now, you guys have already read through all the applications, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, I would need it really quickly.
Pick one more name.
Yeah.
My concern is by now probably folks have thrown away the applications.
Well, I'd resend them all out, obviously.
Okay. At least electronically.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're not killing trees. Okay. Councilman Camus, how do you feel about us making a selection to add one more by Friday?
And what I would do is I'd actually have you guys each select two more names and then one of the, it'd be whoever gets four or more.
Right. Whoever gets the most votes.
I'm okay with it. I just remember that we got really heavily criticized for rushing through the last one without having a complete process for each one. I'm just trying to remind you. I'm okay with it, but let's say that we don't get all the numbers back by Friday, then we have one more shot to change it on the next Wednesday's meeting?
Yes. I do like to give the applicants notice that they have to come in for an interview, though.
Yeah.
So that's why, I mean, I could say you guys would have up until next Thursday, but that's not really what I'd like to do to the applicants.
So we'll attempt to police ourselves. I think the good news is we had a very robust pool this go-around. That wasn't true in the past. So certainly, we have a lot of candidates to choose from.
I have to say that several of them said that they didn't apply. I've talked to two so far that said that they probably just kept the...
You guys got the applications from everybody who applied within the year.
Okay.
So if somebody applied, you know, like, say, last August, they were included in the pool. So that could be, if somebody said they didn't apply, it's like, well, you're in the pool.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So happy to take suggestions here from the committee.
I think we should move forward. We can do it by Friday. Take two more names than we've got.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. We're smart. We can do that. Okay. Here we go. All right. Pages eight and nine, any changes? Boy, this is a mercifully short meeting after the respite for the last week. Mr. Hernandez, did you wish to speak on this item too? I see -- oh, I'm sorry. That's a study session item. Forgive me. Gail Osborne, did you want to speak on this? I have you under agenda item two. Okay. I think maybe that's, there's not a letter to it. It's probably G2.
G2.
Got it. Okay. I won't call you then. We'll be back to you, Gail. I don't believe I have any other cards for this item. Is there a motion?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Onto the review of City Council study session agenda entitled Anti-Displacement Strategies. Mr. Hernandez, you did like, you did want to speak on this item, right?
First, I just want to recognize the San Jose City's housing department staff, Jackie Morales, Christian Clemmons, Jacqueline Geno. We also have a Jackie Franco. There's about four Jackies that are involved in this. It's like we count them, 1, 2, 3, 4. But they've done so much work over the past year, year and a half in terms of doing community outreach, so we just wanted to say that outright. But we wanted to also make that same request for this study session, is to do something a little later so that we could be able to have participation. We've been working on this for about a year and a half, two years, have a lot of suggestions. Would love to hear all of your comments and the insights that you all have. And so again, to try and push it out to like 4:00 or 5:00, you know, after school, that type of thing where people would be able to participate in the study sessions.
Yeah. I appreciate the challenge because the schedule's from 9:00 to 12:00. That doesn't exactly help the community participate. Okay. So I know this is not an easy one, Dave. I don't know if we've done it an evening, for example, on an evening council agenda where we've added a study session at that time that'd probably get pretty late.
Anything's possible.
I guess, given the nature of the topic, it does seem like something that would be a lot of community interest and concern for.
October 1st is going to be a shorter...
Let me throw out as something that's, I'm sure, not a very welcome suggestion since anything that comes off the cuff is usually not a great idea, but October 1st is a really short agenda.
Sorry. I'm just trying to look at our schedule here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I guess I just have to ask these questions out loud. We had polled the council.
Yeah.
And we've got certain times that we believe we've got availability.
Right.
What is happening on October 4th?
That is clear right now.
So right now, we wanted to move it to October 4th. That was a date that we'd polled the council and it was available. That is from 1:30 to 4:30, so it's not, it's not in the evening, but it's not in the morning as well. So that's one option, I suppose.
Could I throw out another option, Dave? We just went over the October 1st agenda. It's very short. And obviously, it doesn't give you a time certain for a start, but I'm venturing to guess that we'd probably be done with this by roughly 3:00. And if we were to commence a study session immediately upon the conclusion of the council meeting, that would put us well into an evening hour when someone could show up.
If I could ask, you know, so on this study session, we've got a lot of outside participation.
Oh, we do. Okay.
So is Jackie still in the audience?
Hi, Jackie.
And I'm not even sure Jackie will be able to speak for all of the outside participation.
Okay.
Jackie, what we're asking is if the displacement study session could be moved to Tuesday, October 1st. That's a regular council meeting.
Yeah. I think because we have so many outside speakers, we'd want to, we have to confirm with all of them. So we would want a date, a time certain on when it would start because of the outside speakers.
Okay. Dave, you were going through some other options. I interrupted you. I'm sorry.
I'm not sure I have a lot of other options.
October 4th was an option.
Yeah.
One was the October 1st, I'm sorry, the October 4th study session timeframe.
Yes.
That's in the afternoon. So just add on Sunshine, so our release of documents, would we be calling the Tuesday afternoon a...
You'd be calling it a study session.
We still would be calling it a study session.
Right. So you would simply just add a study session after the council meeting or whenever that ends.
So our compliance with Sunshine would conform to study session rules versus regular council?
Right. And you can put, you would put a time on it, but it says, "or as soon after the council meeting is over."
Okay.
That would be the notice for the study session after the council meeting.
So 3:30 or...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it boils down to availability.
So I know ordinarily, we wouldn't do this, but just given the nature of the topic, would it be conceivable for Jackie's team to go check in on availability of, I guess you have some experts that are coming in, is that right? On those two days, one would be October 1st, the other would be October 4th? We know we'll at least have council then. And then we'd come back and rules next week and set the actual date based on what you all agree on?
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Yes. If we could get approval of the agenda?
Yeah.
The...
The agenda itself.
That would be good today.
Okay. So we'll then turn to that subject of the agenda. So I see that, I assume the change is with regard to the letter 5D, the housing developer representative?
Correct. So we have added D, E, F.
Oh, and E and F. Oh, I see.
C. Were all, those were all people we had not originally invited. And the partners who came and talked to us last week were the ones that selected representatives for D, E, and F.
D, E, and F. Okay. All right. Thank you, Jackie, for all that.
So is the council leaving on the 27th unless you decide next week to move it to the first? Because that's what the agenda basically has.
So we'd vacate the 27th, right?
So you can approve the agenda, but then you also have to do something with the date. You leave it as it is and then change it next week? Or change it now and put it back next week? You just have to identify a date for today?
Why don't we pick the sooner date, the first, and that will change when, if staff comes back and tells us the fourth is better for all the folks who are coming in from out of town?
And was it not before 3:00 or 3:30?
Sure. Not before 3:00.
Not before 3:00.
The only thing about putting a time on there is that you won't be able to start it before that time.
That's true.
So sometimes you do it early and you just say this time or as soon thereafter as the council meeting is over. Because if you say 4:00 and you're over at 3:00, maybe you want an hour break before you start. It's just that...
That does make a good suggestion.
Well, yeah. And my concern is having these speakers who would be having to wait and listen to our city council meeting, which I'm sure they would enjoy, no doubt for their public cervix civic concerns, but...
The planning commission interviews generally take at least an hour. If you're interviewing four people, it's probably half an hour per person, 20 minutes to half an hour per person.
Fair point.
So 3:00 is absolutely safe. 3:30 or 4:00, I think, would also...
Okay.
I think we should say 4:00. I said 4:30.
And there's also, is fireworks expected to have a lot?
I think we'd be pretty safe with 4:00.
Yeah. I think so, too.
All right. Okay. So make a motion.
Make a motion to vacate the study session on the 27th and move it to the October 1st city council meeting after the city council meeting at 4:00 time certain.
And that includes approval of the content of the agenda?
And it includes approval of the content of the agenda.
Mayor, any questions?
Is there a question?
Okay. Councilman Arenas.
So I have a question. Who is, can you identify who the housing developer rep is? Well, all of the folks who are coming in for D, E, and F. Jackie?
I cannot. I don't have the names. I got confirmation that they had found a developer and a apartment person, but they did not send me the names. I've requested it and I'm waiting to hear who those names are.
When you say "they," you mean?
So the apartment association is selecting the apartment owner. SVO found a developer and the realtors are looking for the economist.
And do they meet a certain criteria that would validate their experience, like, you know, five to 10 years in doing business in San Jose? Do they meet?
So the economist is probably not going to be somebody local.
No, I get that one, right.
Yeah. So in terms of the, as soon as I find the name, I can, we know all the developers and so I would be able to identify that.
Okay.
And so we will ensure that it's somebody, you know, who's familiar with San Jose.
Okay.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. And the language of the motion didn't quite align with what's suggested.
Right. And that's because I don't know whether you actually want to start at 4:00, even if you end early, or if you want to start the study session...
Yeah.
Well, if you start, if you say 4:00, you will not be able to start until 4:00.
Right, right.
If the council meeting goes past 4:00, you will start as soon as it's over with that.
Yeah. So could I maybe just suggest a modification and say as soon as council completes, but not before 3:30? I think we'll be very safe there.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
All right. All right. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Hernandez, see all the trouble you caused? Perfectly good suggestion. Now we got, all right. We're on to public record.
I have no file.
Second.
I have no cards. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item G2 is the homeless task force update. And this is memorandum of council member Peralis, who is here. Would you like to speak, Councilman Peralis?
Yeah. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. You've got a motion and a second already, so you're ahead. You've got the House, betting with the House money.
Is there any public comment on that?
There is, yes.
I'll hear that first.
Okay. Let's go to the public. I have Gil Osmer, Eric Hernandez, that's a different item, different item, and Paul Edwards.
Good afternoon. Happy Wednesday. First of all, Councilman, thank you for this letter. Secondly, I wanted to know if there's, an answer could be given to me if on the planning meeting that was held in 2017, were there any unhoused folks on the, in these meetings? And also, were there any homeless advocates that are out there in the trenches with the homeless? Were any of those folks part of this planning meeting? As I've seen, there is more and more abatements and there are more and more homeless folks being victimized and more violations of the MOU. Why do we even have a MOU? I saw a violation yesterday at a suite with the water district and housing, of course. These are being violated. Raul's memo says the task force could serve as a structure with experts across departments and agencies to convene. Well, I kind of scratched my head and wondered if these were the same folks sitting behind a desk, making the decisions for the unhoused community. This is why we have a mess. This is why we have a huge housing problem, huge homeless problem, because these aren't the right people sitting at the table. We need to have the right people, not somebody sitting behind a desk. We need to have the right people, not somebody sitting behind a desk. Also, um, I hope the task force gets going soon, not at the end of the calendar year. And any, that's it? Any of you want to really know or talk to some homeless people? I encourage every council member to attend the County Homeless Task Force on Housing by Dave Cortezzi. He's putting this on, on Saturday from 8:15 to 3:00. And we're gonna have over 100 homeless folks sitting at the table, talking to people, telling people their experiences. So, I truly hope, if you really want to know, please attend this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Hernandez?
Good afternoon. My name's Eric. I'm a recovering methamphetamine addict. I was a heavy user for about three years, the past two, four years. And in between, I've slept outside in the creeks, walked across Story Road to, um, to, um, campments to go score some dope. And, um, although that's my past life, as I'm trying to put that behind me, uh, I have sisters and brothers up there that are unhoused. I talk to them, I see them, I take after Father Mateo, who I served as an altar server with until his, until he passed away, it was about 9:00 or 10:00 when he passed away, when I was altar boyfriend. He was known for taking care of, of the unhoused, um, those who were accused of rape, those who were accused of the Anius crimes. And the people who are out here on the streets, um, are, are accused. They are the ones who are hurt in the system. So, I'm asking that we actually take a look back and, um, bring these up, bring these meetings out to, um, to my sisters and brothers out here who live in the creeks, who live out here in the 280. Because those are the ones that we really want to pay attention, actually look and talk to. They're young, they're my age. Uh, they're 30, they're 35, they have kids, they have children that they support. So, I'm asking that we actually take just one day and actually go out and talk to them. I'm going on eight days clean off methamphetamine. And I go score outside into these encampments. I'm not saying that to criminalize them, I'm saying to, not to criminalize, but I'm saying to take a step back and actually look at, um, your sons and daughters that are out there by the creeks and honor the work of Father Mateo, um, through one of his altar services coming out here trying to, um, you know, be a part of solution. So, it's come out to the creeks. Thank you.
Thank you. And Paul Edwards?
I have a somewhat opposing view to that. I also have a little bit of experience with homeless people. I live in the Tamian neighborhood. We have more than our fair share of homeless out there. Uh, I do talk to them. Some are very decent people, some are just down on their luck, there is that element. Uh, there's also the criminal element. We just heard about this man here, scoring from encampments. We need a way to separate out the people that actually need help from the people that don't want help, that want to take advantage of the situation. They can live for free out there, the police won't do anything about it. This lady has been out in our neighborhood, setting up encampments at usually the same corner for the last three years. We can't do anything about it. Nobody is helping us at all. She slashes tires, has assaulted at least two other women, um, has screamed up and down the street, has almost forced me to get into an accident with, uh, my child in the car. It's, it's a really bad situation and we can't seem to get any reaction from anyone. So, my point of view is that we need to take care of those that, that can be helped, uh, but for those that can't, we need to have a way of separating them out. They shouldn't be able to go and get piles and piles of clothes just to, you know, from Sacred Heart and other places and distribute it all over the city and loot and litter and just mess up our neighborhoods and steal from our front and backyards. Okay, this is what's, what's going on. I mean, I understand that, uh, we need to help people, but, you know, there's the other side of the coin as well. And this task force needs to consider that. Okay, so we need to have like some, you know, balanced approach here to the homeless. And so, there's definitely that criminal side of the, the, of the viewpoint that needs to be looked at. And, uh, I think you're, hopefully you've read some of my emails, but, uh, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Okay, Councilmember Peralas?
Thanks, Mayor. And, uh, thank you to our community members. And Paul, I, I do read the emails coming in and I know you've been working with my staff on, on this specifically and it's not, as we know, this, this sort of similar situation, a lot of us, right, are dealing with it all over the, the city. Um, and, and we, we don't quite have, right, all the solutions. Certainly, uh, even the ones that we do have, we don't have enough of them, uh, we couldn't get them fast enough, uh, to really make a, a big enough of a dent. And then just to answer Gil's question, uh, back in 2017, when my office first convened the first, uh, sort of working group on this, uh, we didn't have anybody in the room, we had some people that were formerly homeless, but we didn't have anybody that was homeless at the time. Uh, but we did have a, a few of the advocates, uh, out in the community. We opened it up to really, to everybody for that, as a public meeting that was here. Um, and really just in, in an attempt to try to get some feedback in regards to this idea of a, a homeless task force. And the reality is that what I saw and what I still see lacking is better collaboration and communication between all the different, not just city departments, but all the different agencies, all the different stakeholders that are attempting to resolve and address this homeless crisis, that we don't have that level of coordination and communication, I believe, where we should have it. And, uh, and after having those initial stakeholder meetings, there was a consensus that, that, um, individuals felt there was a lot of good efforts happening, uh, but definitely disjointed. And certainly what there wasn't was a, a forum, sort of a regular forum, of decision-makers, advocates, individuals that are, that are in the homeless community, uh, to continue to understand and work better together on addressing this crisis and, um, working on solutions. And so, I know that our, um, you know, from our city manager's office, and this has been a conversation I've had with, um, with Dave, um, in regards to just trying to, to lift this up, uh, as a higher priority than, than what we've seen it. And I understand it's not just us, certainly we're working in partnership with the county here, we're working in partnership with stakeholders, um, because that's what we would want ultimately this task force to look like, is not just something that's internal. But really where it, where it struck a chord was recently on the safe parking, and this is sort of all repetitive, so I apologize. But for the public's sake, you know, when, when we had the conversation and we saw the, the failure, if you will, at the first pilot for safe parking, what I heard from a number of the community members that came out, um, was that a, a big reason as to why they could no longer support it, uh, was because of some of the misinformation, or at least what they felt were promises that were made on how, uh, the, the safe parking and the surrounding area would be managed. And then, uh, a lack of sort of that communication and collaboration, even just between our own city departments. And then, more recently, hearing some of the concerns around Roosevelt, where we're attempting, uh, a lot of really great opportunities for our homeless, but yet now I'm beginning to hear from community members, some of the, the resentment of, hey, it looks like our community center is being taken over. We're not seeing just the basics being addressed, like the cleanliness of it, um, the cleanliness of the parking lot, the cleanliness of the bathrooms and the showers. And I mentioned this obviously as well, um, in the last public meeting, that, you know, anytime you use something more than you were using it before, um, it's, it's just gonna be more, right, it's gonna need more maintenance, it's gonna need more, more, uh, attention. And that may be something that we missed, right, in, in this regard. And this is where, you know, even internally, I think we're still lacking. The task force is more than just internal, so it's kind of a next step. So, when I saw that, I was really concerned that, uh, not only are we not where I think we need to be with a task force that is gonna be inclusive of the county and different agencies, different partners, but we're not even necessarily there internally. And so, that's what really this was, uh, was about and happy to hear, uh, you know, staff's response to it, essentially what it's asking for though, and, uh, you know, giving some time would be to get a response more thoroughly and see if we can't actually form, uh, formulate something before the end of the year. Uh, and thank you to the Rules Committee for moving and seconding the, the memo.
Okay.
Dave? Yeah, so, um, certainly appreciate the input from the community and, and, um, the request here, uh, are, I'll just say green light in terms of what's being asked for here in terms of the update. You know, I think we've been having a lot of discussion on this. And I, you know, I think it, it's important to kind of acknowledge the two kind of major pieces to this, kind of, what are our plans in terms of how we support the homeless in our community, working with our partners, county and others? But how do we support their needs in a positive, helpful way? But also, how do we address the impacts of homelessness in our community, neighborhoods, business areas? So, um, I do think that next week provides us an opportunity to talk through some of this. One of the items that we've already reviewed is the, um, the homelessness annual report. The council will be, be seeing that next week. And I, I think we plan to engage thoroughly in, in this subject. So, uh, green light on the request and, and we plan to engage the council on this subject next week.
Nice, Dave. Any other comments? All right, on the motion then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move forward. Thank you. Okay, on, uh, next up, thank you. I believe the item, uh, that an awful lot of folks are here to speak on is relating to flavored tobacco and e-cigarettes. Councilmember Carrasco has a memorandum she has submitted, along with his colleagues. And would you like to be heard first?
We can hear the audience first.
Okay.
That's great.
Whatever you choose. Okay, great. All right, so we've got many members of the community would like to speak. And if you could just come up as I call your name, uh, first, welcome the superintendent from our county office of education, Dr. Mary Ann Dewan. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, um, staff and community, and also just, uh, thank you for your service to our community. Um, I am Mary Ann Dewan and I am the county superintendent of schools for Santa Clara County. And our office is really pleased to see the recommended actions proposed today under the leadership of Councilmember Carrasco to address the youth vaping epidemic. Uh, we are seeing some very serious health consequences in our community, as well as behavioral and social emotional consequences for our youth. Our office supports taking action on flavored e-cigarettes as one piece of this issue, as flavors do seem innocent enough to young people and youth become quickly addicted. Um, youth brains and their physical development are impacted very differently and more significantly than adults. Given that the use of flavored tobacco products is widespread across all tap, tobacco product types, combustible and non-combustible, regulations should however be com- comprehensive to include all tobacco products. According to research from Stanford, Juul, the most popular e-cigarette among youth, contains nicotine content found in two packs of cigarettes. Nicotine is highly addictive and can harm the developing adolescent brain. And students experience withdrawal symptoms while in the classroom, including irritability, headaches, feeling sad or down, anxious, and explosive and unexplained anger. And the long, long-term effects are unknown. However, over 450 people have been seen in emergency rooms for pulmonary issues and locally, two deaths related to vaping have been confirmed in California as of September 11th. I do have a few, uh, specific comments related to the law and the fact that youth under the age of 21 are not supposed to be sold or have availability to retailers with these cigarettes, yet more than two in five teens reported purchasing from retailers directly. And I have some specific comments, um, to each of the recommendations, I'd be happy to distribute as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dewan. If I could ask you to offer those to, um, to our clerk and we'll make sure we get them to all the members of the committee and of course, to the full council. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, and I'll call folks up if you can just come up in order. Sonia Gutierrez, Paula Baker, I believe it's Paula Baker Prods, please forgive me, Dimitri Marshak, and Carol Baker. Hi.
Hello. My name is Sonia Gutierrez and I'm nowhere the hat of living in the city of San Jose. I'm a mother of an elementary school student and a high school student at San Jose Unified. I also live downtown San Jose, so I am pretty aware of the tobacco retails that are local in my neighborhood. Um, I also am familiar with, um, constant stories of high school stories of vape products being easily accessible. Um, and with the California Student Tobacco Survey saying that students report actually getting tobacco products and in vape shots, um, that students are having access to these products and using flavored products because they're more attractive to youth. Um, and just the stories of my daughter, of her friends suffering from addiction, it being the norm that students are using in the classroom, using in the bathrooms and around campus, makes me an extremely concerned parent. So, um, I am in support, um, Councilwoman Carrasco of this ban, um, and also to kind of just, um, see flavored tobacco overall, including menthol, that, um, our youth are using and they're very popular. Um, I do want to say that, um, we do know from the Stanford Tobacco Toolkit that nicotine is extremely addictive. Um, and we are seeing this in the classrooms, that students are having withdrawals and behavioral problems, and that we're doing our best to support students with their addictions and refer them to addiction services within our county. Uh, so thank you again for taking the time to consider this.
Thank you. Uh, Paula Baker, I think I added a name to you at the end because the word products was somehow, came over the next line, so I apologize, Paula. My apologies for renaming you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I actually would like to defer to Rhonda.
That's a hard finding one, also. Do you want me to speak as?
If you'd like to speak first, that's fine.
Hi, thank you so much, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the Rules Committee. My name's Rhonda McClintock Brown, and I am the Healthy Communities Branch Director of the County of Santa Clara Public Health Department. Um, good afternoon. The Public Health Department is very pleased to see the recommended actions proposed today under the leadership of Councilmember Carrasco to address the youth vaping epidemic. As we know from the recent release California Student Tobacco Survey, um, results for Santa Clara County, we have one in three high school students in the county that have tried vaping and more than one in eight high school students are currently using e-cigarettes. We also know from the survey results that the use of flavors plays a key role in attracting youth to these products, with more than eight in 10 students in the county who use tobacco products reporting the use of flavored tobacco products. The flavoring and targeting youth is a real problem. More than two in five teens, as just mentioned, reported purchasing their own cigarettes with over a quarter of this group saying that they buy them directly from a store. The proposal to address the over-concentration of tobacco sales and marketing in low-income neighbors within the city of San Jose will go a long way towards addressing the historical and unjust marketing by tobacco companies toward low-income residents and communities of color. We also hope to see the city take a comprehensive approach when restricting the sale of flavored tobacco, including those of e-cigarettes, menthol cigarettes, little cigars, and hookah. The County of Public Health Department, as always, offers our full support and expertise to you, to assist you and the City of San Jose in moving these efforts forwards. Thank you so much. And also, if you, I'm, I, I'm assuming you have a copy of the survey report, but if there's any additional documents we could provide for you, we're happy to do that.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your work at the county.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With regard to the work, or the, the study, I think that it would be important for you to reconvene that or make sure we get it for, when it comes to the full council.
So, you would like us to forward that copy to you?
I think when it, um, we're probably gonna hear shortly, uh, about what the process will be and probably know more about with the next steps, but I suspect this may go to prioritization.
We're available to you in any way that you need us to.
Great.
And we'll forward it to you just in case.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Ms. Baker, I'm sorry, did you want to speak at this time?
I'm here just to urge, uh, the council to consider including menthol tobacco in the overall ban. Uh, menthol tobacco makes up about 35% of big tobacco's profit. Uh, it was the first flavored tobacco product. And I, I work with colleagues in the African-American Tobacco Leadership Control Center, Control Association, who are researchers at UCSF, who've been studying papers, documents, um, of the tobacco companies for about 10 years. And they specifically marketed, they studied the papers for 10 years, but they know that big tobacco targeted the African-American community for over 50 years. And it's revealed in their own papers what their strategy was. Their strategy was to market to the black community during the 1970s because black culture was having a big impact on youth of all cultures. So, if you only ban the fruity flavors and so on and so forth, in fact, some, Juul has volunteered to take that off the market. But if you leave menthol on the market, you are continuing to endanger our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Marsha, and followed by Carol Baker, Chad, I believe it Chad Noe, and Vanessa Marvin.
How's it going? Can I remind everyone that bans still work? Eighteenth Amendment, Twenty-First Amendment? Do we not remember that? Uh, the doctor here? She stood up and she lied to you. She told you that deaths were from vaping. They're not, they're from teaching cartridges. This is very well known. Thirteen days ago, New York Department of Health said laboratory test results showed very high levels of vitamin E acetate in nearly all cannabis-containing samples analyzed by the Wadsworth Center. At least one vitamin acetate-containing vape product has been linked to each patient that submitted a product for testing. About flavors. We got any wine drinkers here? That's like saying to you guys, you can have wine, it can only be Franzia. That's it. That's what you're doing. This is, this is gonna destroy customers' lives, this is gonna destroy businesses. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Baker, welcome.
Good afternoon, I'm Carol Baker. I'm the chair of the Tobacco Free Coalition of Santa Clara County, and I am here to speak to you today, not as that, but as an addict, I am addicted to nicotine. I started when I was 13 years old. I took a first cigarette, but that had nicotine in it. And I was horribly embarrassed because I was coughing, 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 and I thought that was very embarrassing. Somebody came up to me and said, if you try the cigarette with menthol, you
Somebody came up to me and said, "If you try the cigarette with menthol, you won't cough so much." Sure enough, I tried it behind closed doors to see if it would work. It worked. I did not cough. And from then on, I was an addict to, for 30 years, I was an addict to smoking, could not quit no matter what I tried. This stack of papers here is our endorsements from your citizens in your effort, endorsing your efforts to stop smoking among children and adults also, I believe. And so we want to thank you for taking into consideration the results of e-cigarette use among teens in San Jose. And of course, the most shocking fact about e-cigarettes and vaping among teens is that now several deaths have been conducted to the use of these tobacco products. We hope your studies will result in a complete elimination of the sale of all e-cigarettes and vaping products, or at least take the first small step by banning the sale of all flavored products. And thank you so much for trying to protect San Jose youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. No? I hope I didn't mispronounce that.
Good afternoon, Mayor Licardo, City Councilmembers and respective staff. My name is Chad No, and my pronouns are he/him/his. I actually grew up here in San Jose. I graduated from both William Shepherd Middle School and Piedmont Hills High School. Currently, I am a Program Manager overseeing the LGBTQ Tobacco Control Program at the San Francisco Community Health Center. I've come back to my hometown today in support of our partners at the Santa Clara Community Tobacco Free, Tobacco Free Communities Program, and to raise awareness around the dangers of flavored tobacco and e-cigarettes. It is also worth noting that I am a former smoker of six years, and e-cigarettes and vapes did not help me kick my nicotine addiction. In regards to the issue at hand, our team at San Francisco Community Health Center wanted to share some quotes on flavored tobacco products we gathered from the most recent Silicon Valley Pride. Quote, "Flavored tobacco targets youth to get them hooked," a 73-year-old San Jose resident. Quote, "There is no need to sugarcoat another opportunity for addiction and optimal health disminishment," a 49-year-old San Jose resident. Quote, "A lot of teens get addicted easily," a 43-year-old San Jose resident. Quote, "We need to keep it away from kids," a 29-year-old San Jose resident. Quote, "The number of young people who smoke it is alarming. It would be better to ban it," a 19-year-old San Jose resident. Simply put, we are experiencing a national moment in regards to ending the youth vaping epidemic and taking a stand against corporate tobacco in order to protect this beautiful and diverse community. I truly hope that San Jose is on the right side of this moment. Thank you for your time and thank you for listening. And it's nice to be back home. Thank you.
Welcome back. Vanessa Marvin? After Vanessa is Nam Nguyen, I believe Dalton, and Ryan Freeman. Hi.
Hi, good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Vanessa Marvin. I'm a San Jose resident, a parent, and a member of the Tobacco Control Coalition. And I really appreciate you guys looking at taking these steps here today. And we've been saying for a number of years, before even this moment and this crisis and these deaths that we're seeing now, we've been saying for a long time that the e-cigarette and the flavored tobacco is a real problem in our community and that it's an unregulated market, that we have these products, we're making experiments on our kids and on our communities by having these products be in the community with no regulation. And now we're seeing what's happening because of that lack of regulation. I think what's, you know, what's a lot of adults and people who don't have kids that are middle school or high school, don't really see the problem. They don't see what's happening in our schools. They hear the hype, probably some of what you'll hear here today about that these are products meant to help people quit, that these are products that are helping people switch from traditional tobacco and maybe helping people. But that's not the truth. The products that we're talking about are candy flavor, bubblegum flavor, unicorn breath flavors, all of these crazy flavors that are aimed at our kids. This is not a product that adults are picking up. This is a problem that kids are picking up. And a lot of the studies you've heard about from some of the speakers previously, and we'll probably hear more about, about one in three children in our community have, high school students have tried e-cigarettes. The number of them who've tried, who are able to purchase them really bears us out. This is a product that's aimed at our middle school and high school students and that we need to take action to protect them. So I want to thank you guys for looking at this and taking steps today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Councilman. I know that vaping is a lot on these kids' minds. And I know it is an epidemic for kids. But what we really need to do is stop online sales. Leave it to specialty stores like cannabis. You've got to be 21 in order to come to our stores. We don't let anybody in our stores that are underneath 21. Keep it away from gas stations, liquor stores. Those are easily, kids are going in, buying sodas, chips. When they check out, they're marketed by a bunch of tobaccos that are right behind them, right behind the owner. So once again, we need to educate our kids about vaping, all right? Stop the marketing on YouTube, Instagram. I got 50 customers a day coming to my stores and they're all older as well. They thank me every day for helping them get off cigarettes, okay? We want to look at the older generation, older adults. I know we need to protect our kids. I have a daughter as well, too. I don't want her to get onto vaping or any kind of tobacco. We need to penalize these kids. If you see these kids in schools that have vaping or anything like that, we need to penalize them, fine them, let them know that there is a repercussion for vaping. Please don't hurt the adults by banning these flavors. It is out there helping out. I really don't want you guys to ban vaping in general, all right? It is out there helping out the older adults. I'm a former smoker and I really don't want to go back to cigarettes. I also recommend Juul's is a really big case out there that our kids are getting into this. So if you guys want, ban Juul's from San Jose completely. I'm behind that as well. I just don't want you guys to ban vaping in general in San Jose. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If I could call your name, you could just line up here, help us move along. Ryan Freeman, Jen Grand Lejano, and Priscilla Acuna. Thank you.
Hello. My, my father always told me that if I want people to respect my view, I must respect theirs first. We're all going through pain right now. Truth is, I wasn't expecting it. I'm just a guy like many with a fiance, the very love of my life, that I get to build a life with, that right now doesn't involve filling her lungs with smoke anymore. She was 16 when she started smoking. She was 22 when she bought her first vape kit at a vape shop right off of Allen Rock Avenue. And that flavor was Choco Cow. That was four years ago. Not a puff of smoke since. If you are a parent, I'm proud of you. Don't let your child touch nicotine. Vote yes for regulation. Vote yes for taxes to contribute to the community. But I strongly disagree with blaming vape flavors for attracting kids to use them. My future wife is a responsible adult. She has taste buds, too, and she effectively used flavors to quit. These companies began years ago with very immature and downright stupid labeling and flavor names, I'll admit, and we should prevent that. Bottom line is, if 80% of teenagers surveyed by the government, per the Wall Street Journal and Washington Examiner, say they picked up vaping because of its flavor, then the nearly 43 million ex-smokers in America, including my fiance, can use the same valid reason. The American Cancer Society themselves even supported vaping over smoking. I ask that the council of our great city, San Jose, look at the big picture because these deaths proven to be linked to black market flavors will skyrocket when the demand from teens and adults has no choice but to be supplied by the same criminal market that has murdered seven already.
Thank you, sir. Sir Freeman?
Hi, guys. My name is Ryan Freeman. I actually drove all the way down here from San Jose. We are on all ends of the vaping industry. I myself quit four packs a day over four years ago and set up a company with a friend of mine. We grow nationally. We have gotten numerous people, older people, off of cigarettes completely, as well as myself. I also have a five-year-old son and he knows not to go anywhere near our products. One of the things we're trying to do up in Santa Rosa right now is to actually implement education. Yes, I believe that some of these bans need to happen. I think that all this marketing with cartoon characters and all that, yeah, that needs to happen. We are redwood. We are a tree. That's all you see on our bottle. Secondly, with what we're doing up in Santa Rosa is literally, we already talked to the city. We've already reserved the city council, like the room within the city hall, and gotten numerous principals on board in all the different high schools around our surrounding area. And they're sending out newsletters to the parents about basically, know what your kids are vaping and know the dangers. We get all the parents together. We educate them on what to look for. This is THC. This is this type of style of vape that you have in your gas stations. We don't provide that. We own a shop as well. We also have one in Michigan suffering tremendously because of it and a lot of our clientele has gone back to smoking. One of the things that we wanted to basically implement with this is run it like a dispensary. You have, I don't care if you have to hire private security to be there, to card people, to do whatever it needs to happen. But like I said, for myself, I literally got off four bags a day. Lost my kid to my ex-wife and I'm battling that right now and I'm not smoking and it makes a big difference in my life, along with all the people that we have behind us that are trying to do the same. We make a big stand on not only underage vaping, but you come into our shop, oh, I'm looking to quit smoking. Okay, awesome, I'm going to cigarettes to smoke. Oh, I don't smoke. You can leave. I'm not going to be nice about it. This is not a fad. This is used to help people. And we've helped numerous people, one including a guy that came in with COPD into a shop who was treated disrespectfully, took him out of that shop, told him to go down to another shop and talk to these people. He would help him out. So he went down there. I didn't see the man again after he hugged me crying. I didn't see him again for three months. And I went back down there and he was a full life and talking to the kids about everything. It was amazing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Ms. Grand Lejano?
Good afternoon. I'm Jen Grand Lejano, Government Relations Director with American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network. Thank you for considering action to protect San Jose youth from flavored tobacco. I'm here to ask you to end the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including flavored e-cigarettes and menthol cigarettes. Tobacco is still the number one preventable cause of death in California. And now the tobacco industry is targeting our children with fruit, candy, and mint-flavored tobacco to lure them into a lifelong addiction. With 90% of adult smokers starting in their teens, this is very much a pediatric issue. Four out of five teens who smoke started with a flavored product. Kid-friendly flavors don't belong in tobacco, which is the only legal product sold that when used as directed will kill you. Menthol cigarettes and other flavored combustible tobacco, like little cigars and hookah, cannot be left out of this discussion. The tobacco industry has a long documented history of targeting communities of color. When discussing good policy, we cannot exempt any tobacco products or any flavors or any stores. Thousands of middle and high schoolers just went back to school in San Jose and are seeing and using these products in their classrooms and on campus. Please consider them, their families, and their teachers and adopt a policy to end the sale of all flavors of all tobacco products. Thank you.
Thank you. After Ms. Acuna will be Natalie Mendoza Perez, Tanya, Tanya, I'm going to mispronounce your name, Paya Pilley, and Jason Sagisi. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Priscilla Acuna and I am a Program Manager of Working Partnerships USA. On behalf of Working Partnerships USA, I'd like to encourage support of Councilmember Carrasco's proposal to regulate the sale of electronic cigarettes and flavored tobacco products. A recent survey released by the Santa Clara County Public Health found, by the Santa Clara County Public Health Department, found that one in three teens in the county have used an e-cigarette at least once and over 82% of teens currently using tobacco reported using a flavored product. Councilmember Carrasco's proposal offers common sense solutions by limiting the sale of tobacco products near schools and regulating the density of tobacco retailers in the city. It also removes potentially dangerous tobacco products from store shelves by prohibiting the sale of e-cigarettes and flavored tobacco products that have not been approved by the FDA. These products disproportionately harm youth. With tobacco companies actively marketing their products to youth and with rates of teen tobacco use on the rise, we support Councilmember Carrasco's efforts to protect the health of our communities and urge you to support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Ms. Mendoza Perez? Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Thank you for your time. So I just wanted, my name is Natalie Mendoza Perez and I work with schools in Santa Clara County. I'm the youth engagement person and I go around talking to teens about vaping and marijuana. So first of all, we're getting insane amounts of requests from schools asking us to do presentations because not only are high school students really needing this information, staff, families, but also middle school and even elementary school. Many of our requests are coming from fifth graders, from elementary schools, asking us to educate third graders, fifth graders. This has become really alarming. When I talk to teenagers about what they think, what they think about the teen vaping epidemic, they tell us that they're really concerned about their friends changing. There are different people nowadays, the way that they describe their friends. Academically, their grades are dropping. The symptoms, the withdrawal symptoms that Ms., Dr. Dewan shared about teens having explosive emotions, anger, withdrawal symptoms, irritability, unable to concentrate being in class, needing to go to the restroom every 20 minutes just to have another puff. And I also want to comment on the discipline issues this is bringing to schools because having this issue makes district people, school people now know what to do because right now there are no good cessation methods to really help teenagers with nicotine addiction. And so many times, schools right now are resorting to suspension. But if you really think about it, when teens get suspended for nicotine addiction, they're just going home to vape more, right? So the addiction continues. And we're also getting requests for Saturday school, which is a way to bring the students instead of suspension, can we educate and may help them reflect? That's the, basically the only way we're looking at. But right now, we don't even have the capacity countywide to be able to do that for all schools. So we're really concerned about this, really hope that you take this issue seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Good afternoon, Your Mayor. My name is Tanya Payapili and I lead the Tobacco Prevention Program at Breathe California. Our CEO, Margot, she has already sent you a letter expressing our agency's support, but I'm here to share a story with you that I had with one of the students that I was delivering a presentation and after explaining to them about the health effects of vaping and flavors and, you know. So this student, I believe he was nine years old, he slowly raises his hand and I asked him what happened and he's like, I don't believe in all this. I'm all in for nicotine. I asked him why and I wanted to reason with him, but this was at the end of one hour. So he said that nicotine relieves stress. My brother has no issues using nicotine. And moreover, our parents buy us candy, so I don't see any harm in, you know, buying it from a store. This is exactly his words and I was very shocked. I wanted to reason with him and explaining, explain it to him. I was happy I was able to, you know, weigh the benefits of not doing it with him and he agreed to it. But this, the point here is, if this one kid is thinking like this and there are many other kids thinking about vaping in the same manner. Moreover, many parents think about it in a similar manner, too, because this is so new. And the issue is because this is easily accessible to the kids. Secondly, parents are new to these marketing strategies, so they are not able to like stop it or nip it in the bud. And moreover, flavors mask the harshness of tobacco. So the kids think it's okay to do it. So, you know, so cities, I urge the city to actually take an action. And I thank Councilmember Carrasco for, you know, welcoming this issue as a public health threat. Thank you.
Thank you. After Jason is Ricky Hune, Maribel Montanes, Tony Doan, Amaya Wooding, and Eric Lump.
Thank you. My name is Jason, 24, born and raised in San Jose. Went to Evergreen Valley High School. Wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity to speak today. I just wanted to start off by, at 15, I started to smoke cigarettes. I woke up every day pretty, feeling pretty bad, couldn't breathe, didn't want to get out of bed. At 18, legal age, so they decided to make, you know, a change for my health because I knew it was better. As soon as I started, I did feel better. It's funny because the flavored vaping devices saved my life and my health. As for my mother and my aunt, there was something that switched them off of cigarettes and that was stage two cancer. So I just wanted to say, you know, to strip someone of the opportunity to make a change, to have opportunity to get off a traditional cigarette. to have opportunity to get off of traditional cigarettes is important. You know, flavor, flavored vapors saved my life, and I wish I could've saved my family. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor and Council, thanks for having me, giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Ricky, and I'm a born and raised native of the city. I would like to speak today as a consumer, a big consumer, and speaking on behalf of the other consumers as well. Six years ago, I kicked my pack-a-day smoking addiction and made a switch to vaping with flavored products like Captain Crunch Mango or Strawberry Cream. I can't tell you how much my health has improved. I've kicked other addictions along the way, and also lost fifty pounds while living this healthier lifestyle. I'm aware there has been many concerns regarding the e-cigarette flavors on the market. There are upwards of fifteen thousand on the market. With that mentioned, I would like to inform the Council that our local vape shops, which helped me kick the habit, have a process to determine which flavors they will be carrying for their business. These flavors are sampled by adult vapers or ex-adult smokers to determine which flavors would be determined to be stocked at the business. Majority of these manufacturers that provide these flavors, they're not Juul, they're not Big Tobacco, and I know we're talking about a PMTA test, but a lot of these companies would not be able to, be able to do that and provide these flavors for the market as well. I believe it's important to keep these flavors available for future adults trying to quit traditional cigarettes in the future as well, and just remember that is responsible for four hundred and eighty thousand deaths per year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Montanes, welcome.
Good afternoon, I'm Maribel Montanes, and I'm here on behalf of Gardner Health Services, and we serve over sixty thousand patients in Santa Clara County, half of those being children. The CDC is investigating serious lung illnesses associated with e-cigarette products. And less than a month ago, the CDC issued our clinic, our health centers, an advisory encouraging our clinicians to report possible cases of e-cigarette or vaping-associated pulmonary disease to our local and state health departments. I won't repeat the findings that were reported out by Santa Clara Public Health, showing the widespread and increased use of e-cigarettes or vapes amongst our youth. But I will relay the concerns of our pediatrics and providers at Gardner Health Services. And that is that the findings are extremely alarming. Since e-cigarettes only became popular that, less than ten years ago. Without policies that curb access to vaping products, our providers will continue to face an uphill battle on educating children and children alike about the dangers of tobacco and nicotine. We already know that tobacco is a highly addictive substance and can change the chemistry of the teen's brain, worsening memory and concentration for young people. In addition, the aerosol from e-cigarettes can contain cancer-causing chemicals such as formaldehyde and benzene. Our providers are extremely concerned that more than four hundred and fifty probable and or confirmed cases of severe lung illnesses are associated with vaping, including six deaths. And the details and exact causes are still under investigation by the CDE. However, our provider believe, our providers believe that none of these products are safe for our youth or adults. Councilwoman Carrasco's policy takes action in order to protect thousands of children and adults in San Jose, and we are in full support, and we hope that you take action as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doan? Tony Doan?
Greetings, Councilmembers and city staff, my name is Amaya Wooding.
Amaya, I'm sorry, forgive me.
Yes, no worries. So the Mayor, you might remember my Uncle Chris from your district three days, you nicknamed him the mayor of Rhodes Court, or the emperor of Rhodes Court, rather. Yeah, so I wanted to emphasize a point in Councilmember Carrasco's memorandum in a paragraph that kind of straddles a page break, but I think is really important, that acting on flavored combustible products such as strawberry cigarrillos, that not doing that would leave behind lower-income youth who maybe don't have the money for a thirty-dollar Juul, but do have a dollar and change for like a one-twenty-nine grape-flavored Swisher Sweets product. And I had time left, I also wanted to raise a point, that tobacco use is a massive problem in the transgender community, which is a community that I'm a part of. Even in a relatively safe place like California, where I can use the bathroom without breaking the law, it's still really stressful to be trans. And so that a lot of trans people I know are really struggling to quit, even with vaping as an option. And it's especially bad because nicotine of any kind makes surgery really risky, and it increases the risk of blood clots. So that's why, you know, my sister, my trans sister across the street, she had to quit menthol cigarettes in order to start her estrogen therapy. So please consider making nicotine less appealing as an elephant or a cell phone for people like me. Thank you.
Thank you, Amaya. Tony Doan?
Hey, guys, Eric Lump, it is Vapor Seven here in San Jose. Eighteen-year smoker, seven-year vapor. I had a few things that I really wanted to touch on on my phone today, but I did wanna touch on a couple of things that a couple of folks up here had said, talking about the recent deaths with the six people who died and the over five hundred who were sick. It is absolutely, the CDC is reporting it's weed cartridges, black market weed cartridges, nothing to do with vape risers. To the people like you that talk about the youth vaping in schools, parenting, how about that? How about you guys talk to your kid? I, I, I don't see how every bit of this can fall onto the vape shops. I, I see liquor stores probably selling to underage kids, but I invite any of you to come into any of these shops out here and see, I have a three-step process. I also look for straw purchases, and I kick them out all the time, and I take pride in that because I don't want the kids doing what they're doing. I don't, it's not so much it's messing up my business, it's messing up the community, and I get it. But to just do an all-out ban, I don't know. I feel like it's real unfair to all the thousands of adults that we've got off of these cigarettes. I mean, I look at it, four hundred and fifty thousand people die every year because of cigarettes. But you're not up here talking about that. That kills a lot of people every year, nobody's discussing banning those, why not? Why? Seriously, if you wanna, why not just ban cigarettes in San Jose then? Is that, I don't know, it just doesn't fit the narrative, I feel like everyone wants us gone. I'm getting really upset right now, so I'm just gonna stop right here, but, yeah, I'm just gonna stop. You guys have a good day.
Tony Doan? After Mr. Doan is John, looks like Dermarita, please forgive me if I misread your name, John. Randy Wang, Blythe Young, and Peja from Northwood Elementary.
Good afternoon, Councilmember, my name is Tony Doan, and I am a tax-paying resident of San Jose. First and foremost, I would like to say that I agree that it is horrible what we're seeing with the spike in youth usage of vaping products. But that is why we as a community and parents should be working harder together to educate our youth about vaping products, the same way that we educate them about marijuana and alcohol, which by the way, is still legal. Five thousand youth die per year due to alcohol-related death. Please let that soak in. And I am sure you could walk down the aisle today on any grocery stores, and you'll find flavored beer, wine, vodka, margaritas in the center of the aisle. Why not ban those? So why not enforce our laws that we have in place currently? With five thousand youth dying yearly, I think alcohol should be a bigger problem than we should be looking at than vaping products at the moment. A product that has saved thirteen million American adults. We do not, if we say we care about the adults, then we need to make the right thing. Half a million mothers, fathers, grandmothers, and grandfathers die yearly from combustible cigarettes. If we say their lives matter, then let's do the right thing. Let's work as a community and post higher fines on retailers that sell to minors, harsher punishments for youth, parents, and straw buyers, but not ban illegal products that adults use to survive. I myself was only able to quit smoking, you know, a ten-year habit through flavored vapes. If I was only able to vape on tobacco flavors, and that was the only choice, I would probably still be smoking today, and my eleven-year-old daughter would not enjoy hugging her father every night. Statistics shows that eighty-five percent of the current American vapers quit cigarettes with flavored vapes. We have seen through history that prohibition has never worked, and it will not work now. It will only cause a bigger problem with black market, the same issue that we are seeing with all the recent illness stemming from black market THC cartridges, not vaping products. FDA has already released this statement, thank you.
Thank you, sir. John, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
If you could squeeze the handle, just pull it up to you a little bit. Uh, no, I'm sorry, it's the handle right above, above your hand, oh, now it's below your hand. There it is, that's it, there you go.
Yeah, little talk, sorry. Thank you, good afternoon. John Dermonic, business owner, resident of San Jose. Smoker for fifteen years. Flavored products got me and my wife up ten years off of cigarettes. I am now a parent of a newborn. This is my livelihood. I own a vape shop here in San Jose locally. As Mr. Lump said, we take pride in what we do at our shops, okay? We do not sell to children, we also look out for straw purchases. So I urge, again, the Council, where are the parents in all this? That's going on, epidemics in the high schools, the junior highs, what are they doing? Because I know I would be darned if my daughter were to be doing something like this, and if I found out, it would definitely be stopped. You're taking away a chance by banning these adult smokers like myself to get away from traditional cigarettes that are killing four hundred and fifty thousand people a year. So, again, I urge you to definitely not do this in terms of, like I said, there's a lot of people in here, this is their livelihood. My father, seventy-three years old, COPD, emphysema borderline, both of those. He has been on vaping, he's been vaping for four years now, since I switched him over. He is no longer in those areas. So in terms of people saying it's unhealthy, it's not healthy. I'm standing here today, ten-year vapor in front of you, I'm completely healthy. I have no breathing issues. The issue is, as has been said before, black market THC cartridges filled with vitamin E acetate or whatever else they're putting in those things. I urge you as a community, as councilmembers, to take a look into that and not ban vaping. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Wang.
Good afternoon, my name is Randy Wong, and I'm at Breathe California. We're an organization that I think you've heard, works on issues of asthma, clean air in the environment, and also we spend quite a bit of time on tobacco prevention education for youth. I'd like to mention that near our office, you know, just midtown in District Six, walking around near some of the schools there, you know, I've noticed, you know, on the fences and sidewalks near some of the schools, you know, quite a bit of, you know, foil pouches from flavored cigar products, and also, you know, the waste from e-cigarette products that have been kind of littered on the ground. Just like to point out that although there are many reasons why it could be, that litter could be near schools, I think, you know, the most plausible explanation is that youth are using those, you know, at school, leaving them right there along the fences. I would also like to mention that e-cigarette use has really driven youth use of tobacco products. Of the estimated, there's estimated research from, that for every adult who might switch from e-cigarette, from cigarettes to e-cigarettes, that approximately eighty young people, the youth of young adults will end up becoming regular nicotine users. That's two busloads of children and young adults for every single adult who might have the opposite experience. So in the end, I think the issue really is this, that flavored tobacco products in general, including menthol cigarettes and fruit-flavored cigars, and also candy-flavored e-cigarettes, and e-cigarettes in general, really are undoing all the work that adults, parents, faith leaders, teachers are doing to try to protect our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy, forgive me for mispronouncing your name. Blythe, welcome.
Good afternoon, my name is Blythe Young, and I'm the Community Advocacy Director for the American Heart Association. I'm here today to support a complete flavor-menthol policy to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products in San Jose without exemptions. So a complete policy would reduce access to the tobacco industry's key products and addicting new customers, particularly youth, particularly of communities of color. E-cigarettes on the forefront, but we cannot afford to leave communities that have been left behind continuously by menthol and other flavored products behind again. This is a social justice issue. Many other Bay Area cities have passed policies that cover all flavored tobacco in their tobacco retail licensing, including vape products, and these cities have not seen businesses close their doors as a result of those policies. Once addicted, youth use all flavored tobacco interchangeably, so it's important that we cover our bases. Tobacco industry is actively and aggressively working to addict new young people, particularly those of community color, with flavored tobacco products. They know that flavors like mint, menthol, tree-top apple juice was one I saw recently, circus animals, adults don't need those flavors, and they're highly appealing to youth. AHA has also recently released data that shows that the flavors themselves are potentially carcinogenic. In twenty eighteen, three-point-six million American middle school and high school students reported using e-cigarettes. That's one-point-five million more than twenty seventeen. New data shows that between those two years of twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen, there was one-hundred-and-thirty-five percent increase in youth use. Education is not enough, youth penalty is not an option, and flavors hook kids. These devices and their coordinating candy-flavored nicotine products have addicted a whole new generation of users, creating an epidemic that is taking the health and lives of young adults and teens. There's no regulation on what goes into these products because they haven't been regulated by the FDA. Just last week, the FDA warned e-cigarette makers like Juul to stop making health claims. Adults talk about switching to e-cigarettes, but with alarming amounts of nicotine in these products, no one talks about successfully quitting e-cigarettes and nicotine. In your pursuit of protecting children's health and passing a sound flavored tobacco ordinance, we urge you to pass an ordinance covering all flavored tobacco products. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome. I'm sorry, is it P.I.J.A.? Oh, that's an R. I'm sorry, oh, Priya, there's an R in there, I got it, I misread it, thank you very much. Priya?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Vice Mayor, and the present dignitaries here. I'm currently serving as a PTA president in the Nordwood School, and I'm a chemical engineer by profession. So I got this opportunity recently to go through and research about Juuls. Right now, as everybody mentioned, this was a topic of my interest, that, you know, how people are switching from cigarettes to vaping, vaping recently, and it comes into a lot of flavors. And since I work in a drug company, so it's very normal or common, like whenever any drug is released, FDA does all the research. But in case of vaping, or specifically Juuls, there is no study or study going on right now, which talks about that there is no impact to the health due to the metal that is used on the, on the vaping device. So I was really surprised and that, that there's no action or there's no formal study. How can, without study, a concrete study, this product is released in the market? How come like people are selling openly in the market to the kids? And, and on top of that, social media is available to everybody, even to the kids. So to me, there are a lot of videos, there are a lot of videos which attract youth, specifically that, you know, how this tool is used in a cool way. And, and I think this is the biggest reason why Juuls is so popular among the kids. Another thing, the design of Juul product, you can easily hide it under the sleeves, and kids are using it like very openly inside the school campuses and all that. So I, I am totally against it, it's spoiling our youths badly. And I congratulate Councilmember to taking this step. And in order to support this, we are having a next, in the next couple of weeks, we are having a red ribbon week in order to support the drug and specifically these kind of tools for the kids. So thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thomas Maris and Don Tran.
Good afternoon, City Councilmembers, Mayor, citizens of San Jose. My name's Thomas Maris, and I'm a resident in the East Side, Story and White, District Five. I started smoking in ninth grade because it was cool, right? I was one of the victims the Marlboro Man and Joe Camel got. You know, it was, it's just, it's a terrible, terrible thing, I'm absolutely on board. We need to get something done quickly with getting nicotine out of these children's hands. They, I believe somebody came up and said earlier that kids that are exposed to nicotine under the age of sixteen become lifelong nicotine addicts. Hi, that's me. I smoked a pack a day for twenty-two years. I tried everything, gum, patches, hypnosis. It was through vaping that was able to get me away from breaking that habit, that association with tobacco smoking. The smell on my clothes is something I appreciated not having that. But I wanted to talk about a memory that I had had, smoking outside the auto shop in high school. Cop came up to us and told us to put out our cigarettes, that was the only penalty. You get caught drinking a beer on campus, you get expelled, possibly even win a ticket to a free night in jail, right? It's called minor and possession laws. It's called contributing to the delinquents of a minor laws. What happened to those? There's alcohol, minor and possession There's alcohol minor and possession laws, there's marijuana, cannabis minor and possession laws. I looked today, there's zero minor and possession laws for nicotine or tobacco, Santa Clara County. I don't know if that's true, not everything on the internet is. But that's what I saw today, and it shocks me. Now, I just don't think it's, excuse me, I don't think it's right, I'm getting kind of emotional. I don't think it's right to ban flavors and devices for people like myself, responsible adults, who use this to get off of combustible traditional cigarettes. It's not right. We do need to get it out of the hands of kids, but there's a better way to do it. Thank you.
Don Tran.
Good afternoon, well, Mayor stepped out, but council members. My name is Don Tran, Public Policy Coordinator here at the Santa Clara County Public Health Department. Many of our speakers have spoken about fruit-flavored and flavored tobaccos in general. In 2018, the Santa Clara County Public Health Department conducted a youth adult tobacco purchase survey. Within this survey, we had youth ages 8 to 20 visit 109 stores in the city of San Jose. Approximately 23% of these retailers sold illegally to youth, so they're able to get these products. You know, part of my day-to-day job, I meet with many council members, many organizations, talk about this issue, but I also work with the youth. Youth do know that you have to be 21 to buy tobacco, and they're able to get out there and purchase these products. I commend many of the shop owners today who say that they are taking many preventative measures to stop underage sales, and that's great. However, youth are still able to buy these products. Of the 23% of retailers who were surveyed, 11 of the legal sales came from specialty tobacco and vape shops. You know, you can buy anything online nowadays, and it's, there's state legislation that's going to help address some of these issues, but it is happening. Youth are able to buy these products, and we all need to work together as a community, as public sector, to work together to prevent this issue. Those are comments I can make today. So, thank you for the proposal, and we look forward to working together.
Thank you, Don. Okay, Councilor Carrasco. And first, thanks to all the members of the community who came out to speak. We appreciate your input.
Thank you, yes. I want to thank everyone for coming out, for all the advocates on both, on both sides of this issue. I know that this is a very emotional issue for everyone. And I want to say a couple of things before I get into this. I feel like I'm missing something, because people are talking about quitting, and I have to say, I know that nicotine, above all the other substances, is highly addictive. And what the tobacco industry has done has been very effective in getting young people to try their product and to become addicted to it because it's so addictive. And so, when I hear individuals talk about how this helped them switch, or this helped them kick the habit, I'm kind of, I'm a little confused because we've heard that the evidence is clear that one pack is the equivalent of two packs of cigarettes, or nicotine has the equivalent of, you know, it's stronger than one pack of cigarettes. So, I'm not sure what we're quitting, other than inhaling smoke. But, so, I wish everyone luck in their efforts to quit because I think that it's sincere. And as a mother of four children, my job has been to work really hard with my children to make sure that they, that they stay away from certain things in life. It's very difficult because we're bombarded by so many messages, and we're all tempted in so many different ways, not just nicotine, so many other things, that companies are very good at marketing. But this is very concerning. For several years now, my three teenagers, who are still at home, were actually the ones that were very good at educating me about vaping. And I have to admit that they were the ones that were my number-one teachers. And the reason for that was because they're so hip, and they're so well-educated, and they're so much smarter about this subject matter than I am. And they're a lot smarter about social media. Someone came up here and talked about that. And they're the ones that kind of turned me on to this. And so, for the past year, I've been talking to my staff about this, and we started doing some research. What was very alarming to me, but it shouldn't be surprising, was the over-concentration that is happening in downtown San Jose and in the East Side of San Jose. And I'll make sure that everyone gets the heat map. And for your information, Mr. Mayor, and my colleagues, the council members, Councilmember Camus, Councilmember Davis, and Councilmember Arenas, we have 1,300 shops that sell these products that we're concerned about, that I'm concerned about, but the over-concentration is, of course, in D5 and D3. And...
Councilor Carrasco, at some point, could you just pass that along? So, we could look at it as well. It's just a little difficult for us.
You can see it right there.
Thank you.
And so, you'll see it throughout the city, but you'll see, I just outlined there, how they're over-concentrated in those two districts. And so, of course, we know that historically, when you look at what the tobacco company has, the tobacco industry has done, has always targeted communities of color and poor communities. And so, this does become a social justice issue, it becomes an economics issue, and it becomes a health issue for our communities. And a lot of folks who have come up here, who have been involved with the study, have cited that 1 in 3 youth have already vaped, 1 in 8 are actively using. And we've had different individuals from the county and school districts and parents speak on what they're seeing in the schools with our youth. The products that are being, that are being sold and used and advertised, the flavored products, bubble gum, Dr. Pepper, cherry mint, apple pie, vanilla, strawberry cheesecake, pancake flavor, piña colada. And my children just told me of a new one, which, you know, if I vaped, I guess I would enjoy, or chata flavor.
Or chata.
Or chata. There's, it's not a, it's not an accident. These are very attractive flavors. And I get it, you know, adults would probably enjoy it also, but it's not an accident. These are very specifically targeting our kids. And let's be very clear, I want to emphasize, underscore and underline, these products are not FDA-approved. So, it's alarming that this has kind of gone under the radar and that we are permitting them to run rampant and be sold. And again, someone just mentioned it, I was going to mention it in my notes, and I'll repeat it, that 23% of the kids that were part of this study by the county's Public Health Department, 23% of the youth that participated were sold these products. And so, someone from one of the businesses said, when kids under the age of 18 come into their business, he gets them out, which is great, and it's awesome. And I want to acknowledge his efforts because I think he needs to be acknowledged, that he doesn't do anything unlawful. But 23% of the kids who were part of this survey were sold tobacco products. They were sold these products, and so, that is, that's quite alarming. So, not everyone has the kind of integrity that this gentleman demonstrates. You all know that I have had, that I have not been shy in expressing my disagreements with the current administration at the federal level. I don't usually find a lot of agreement with the current president, and I've been very vocal about that. There is one thing that I am currently in agreement with, and that is that he is currently calling for the removal of these products from the shelves until there is an FDA approval. But the federal government tends to be slow, local government can be faster. And that is why I've submitted the current memo that you have before you. We can be quicker, we can protect our children, and we can set the example. There's one other item on the memo that I'm asking for, and you may or may not know about it, which is to address a loophole in the San Jose Tobacco Retail Ordinance. If you are a business that simply slaps a sign on your window that states that no one under the age of 18 can come into your business without an adult, you can bypass the licensing, which costs $597 a year. You can completely bypass it. And I'm asking to close that loophole. No one should be exempt from that license if you sell tobacco products. So, I'm asking to also close that loophole. There's a 19-year-old San Jose student that was quoted. There's a lot of students that were quoted, there's a lot of folks that were quoted, a speaker quoted several of them, but I think this bears repeating. He was quoted in an article by KPIX, who said, "If there was a ban on vaping, that this would encourage him from quitting, as well as his friends." So, I know that there's some controversy regarding banning. I tend to believe that if we go ahead and ban it, especially from advertising to our children, it will curtail the use of these products, especially among our youth.
Thank you. Okay, I know Councilwoman Arenas has a VTA meeting. So, before, I know we'll hear from other folks, did you want to speak before you need to run?
Yes, I, what it comes down to, I think, you know, I'm very supportive of reducing accessibility to our youth. I do think adults are responsible for their own preferences, and I'm very supportive of what the council member has moved forward. I do think that there's a piece missing, and that has a lot to do with education, and it's a piece that I think many of the advocates who came in and are focused on moving forward. I don't know how it fits within the city of San Jose and our efforts, or if there's anything that we're already doing within Crime Prevention Unit in talking about vaping and or talking about cigarettes, because I know that our Crime Prevention Unit does a lot of educational workshops. So, I think that is a component that I think that the governor has focused on in terms of education. I think he's going to dedicate $20 million to the state, and I think we should take advantage of that effort, and I'm not sure how it's going to flow into our city. But, like I said, I think we should be in line with this, and I'm not sure how we could do this. Councilwoman Refu would be willing to incorporate that into your memo. I believe most of this will go to priority setting according to our city manager. But I think the piece that, like I said, is missing is the education and falling in line with what our governor, the direction of our governor, and making sure that we have the resources to educate our young folks about vaping. And I'm very much in line, my father passed away of lung problems, and so, this is very close to me. I have an 11-year-old who is just absolutely educated, you know, by his mother, about cigarettes, and I tell him how the tobacco industry is trying to appeal to him. And so, I believe he's one step ahead, and many parents, I think, are doing the same thing. I think collectively, we also need to, as part of our public service, to have this education in our Crime Prevention Unit, or wherever we see it fit. But I do think that we need to make sure that we're ready when the resources that the governor is moving forward, that we're ready to also integrate that into what we're doing here at the city.
Thank you. Dave, I understand we have some feedback about where our staff has capacity here.
Yeah, so, you have in front of you our response form. I just think it's important to know for everybody, you know, this is not an evaluation on the importance or urgency of the issue itself. It's our evaluation of our ability to take on this workload without impacting other priorities. That's strictly what it is. So, I'll have Lee kind of go through it. You probably turned a page, and I think he can quickly tell you what we're thinking.
Yes, so legislative issue can go ahead, but it seems like the other staff work would need to go through prioritization?
Yes, recommendations 1 through 3 would go to prioritization, and, you know, also on the assessment that we factored in on this was, Councilmember Carrasco is absolutely correct. The federal government has kind of given some direction. Health and Human Services Secretary has stated that FDA will be issuing guidelines in the near future, as well as there's a host of bills in the legislature, as well as the governor's decision on Monday through executive order to put additional regulations in place. So, the policy arena and regulatory environment will probably shift in the next two or three months, giving us better focus as we go into priority setting for what this policy work could look like.
Thanks, Lee. Okay. Councilwoman Davis.
So, I'm a parent of two teens, and I will tell you that, just like, for those of you who have small children, you can't prevent a tantrum in Target. You also cannot prevent your kids from getting exposed to vaping and e-cigarettes and all sorts of things. So, here's what my kids tell me. E-cigarettes, wax pens, wax and weed are all really accessible. The names for vapes, such as Blue Raz, Watermelon, and Piña Colada, appeal to kids. Cookies, wedding cake, and Skittles for wax. Let's see, I don't know a lot of people that smoke regular cigarettes. Those are harder to get and are less appealing for taste. This is all what my children tell me. So, thank you, Councilmember Carrasco, for bringing this forward. Parents can't do it alone, clearly, and we're actually not being helped by the industry. We're being hurt by the industry because they are clearly marketing directly to our kids. And having, and she also knows, my kids also know, puff bars are disposable vapes that are a big thing now. 200 puffs, pretty high in nicotine. And kids get vapes and wax pens because they are easier to hide in school. They look like flash drives, they look like regular pens. So, you have in here electronic cigarettes, would that also include wax pens?
Let's say yes, because I don't know all the tools.
I seriously, this is, this is all coming from my kids.
Councilwoman Davis, could you tell us what wax pens are?
I don't know what they are.
Anybody got a wax pen on?
But I think they look differently, they look different than the e-cigarettes. They have, well, so I do know a little bit because we've had dinnertime conversation about this, and my kids have told me, you can get wax pens that can be used for either nicotine or for weed. And the wax are little bits of wax that will have THC in them, or they will have nicotine in them, and it melts, and that's, and then you smoke that.
Exciting.
That's what I know.
Thank you for the education. Like I said, you know, this is such a new world to me. And since this is going to go to priority setting, I'm sure that we'll have time to play with this.
I can get more information.
Thank you, we'll talk to your children about it.
Maybe we can have Dominic from Charlotte come in.
We could have him do public comment, sure.
Thank you, thank you, council member. But I think, you know, to your point, the fact that your children and my children know more than you and I speaks volumes. And this is, you know, I understand that this is, again, an issue that, of course, becomes very emotional, but, again, the fact that your kiddos and mine know more about this is what makes it even more disturbing. What I wanted to ask Lee and city manager, regarding recommendation number 3, though, can't we fast-track that? Can't that be green-lighted? You know, there's about 44 shops, from my understanding, that would be impacted, about $30,000 a year that would come in. $30,000 a year that would come in as a result of closing this loophole. Why would we have to wait for priority setting on that?
I would say we could definitely follow up planning building code enforcement and follow back up with you on that, to see if it is a technicality. We did not read that as a technicality at first, but in listening to the conversation today, it might have been something that I, so I'm happy to follow up on that.
Yeah, okay, so when can we hear back on that?
I think we could follow back up next week.
Okay, would that come back here?
Do you want to bring it back here? I can make the motion.
Sure.
Okay, so I will move staff recommendation for Councilmember Carrasco's memo, but with further direction to bring back a determination about item number three, and whether that's a technical change that we can make sooner.
Second, can I, Mayor, can I?
Sure.
And Councilmember, I apologize for approaching this so late, but would you be willing to also include in this some of that educational component?
Yes, because I know that Governor Newsom is, did you say it was, I think it's $20 million?
$20 million.
And so I'm interested in knowing how that's going to trickle down, and how, I would assume that we'll get further instruction in terms of how we can access that funding. So it'd be great for us to get ahead of the game.
Perfect, thank you.
And another question, so, Mr. City Manager, would this be, I know that this goes to, this will go all to, the rest of it will go to priority setting? None of it is yellow-lighted?
Well, by yellow-lighting, that's our recommendation, that it goes to priority setting.
All right, okay.
So that's really one and two, possibly three, depending on whether, what we learn next week? Okay. And can I just ask, Ed, or if anyone in here has any institutional memory on this, why do we even have that exemption in place?
So if I can recall, the exemption basically says that if you agree to put a sign that says no one under 18 will be sold tobacco, that was to try to encourage people not to sell, and the incentive was, you don't have to file a license.
Right.
You don't have to get a license if you do that. So that was an incentive for people to try to prohibit minors from buying tobacco. So at that time, 18 was the limit, and they've increased it to 21 since we did our ordinance. So I think that's what the council member is saying, is to increase it to, say, 21s, because right now, they can get the license.
No, I think we want to, I think the idea is to get rid of the exemption completely, because I'm not sure why you need to incentivize someone to follow the law. It's illegal themselves.
All I can tell you is that's what it says, is that if you agree to put a sign that says that you won't sell to anyone under 18, you do not have to get a license. Now, what your suggestion is that everybody, everybody has to get a license to sell tobacco in the city of San Jose.
I believe that's the proposal, right.
Yes, let's close the loophole, let's make sure, so if everyone has a license, then we have the ability to regulate everybody, and to have, to be able to hold everybody's feet to the fire.
Okay, so we're going to look into the history of this and determine if there was a reason why it was limited to people who, that's part of, that's part of the research we're going to do when we come back with the ordinance.
Yeah, and my understanding is that it was, it was, City Ordinance, in 2011 it was put into effect.
2011?
Mm-hmm.
That's not very far back.
Mayor, but I believe, Councilmember, I heard you say, why couldn't we fast-track this, so this is separate from the priority setting?
Yeah.
And then move on this quicker than the other?
Yeah, and so you'll come back next week.
We'll come back next week to determine that. Okay, okay. Councilwoman Camus?
Thank you, and, you know, I appreciate that the federal government is working on it, appreciate that the state is working on it, and I appreciate that Councilmember Carrasco is working on it as well. And I too, I'm a father of two teenagers, in fact, and, you know, they know a lot of things more than I do, including probably math, at this point. But one thing that shocked me about all the testimony on both sides is that the kids are able to get this substance. How do we enforce it? I mean, we can write laws till we're blue in the face, and I don't know how, who enforces tobacco laws here? Is it our police officers, code enforcement? Is it ABC? Is it, I don't know whose responsibility it is to enforce these issues. And I just want to know, and I'll...
It's a combination. It's, I can tell you, our police officers aren't doing very much enforcement in this area, but it's a combination of agencies that are responsible for it.
Does ABC, I mean, I know, well, look, I used to manage a Safeway. ABC used to send in fake shoppers and test us to see if we were selling tobacco and alcohol, if I recall correctly, it's been 20 years since I've been a Safeway manager, but do they enforce tobacco as well?
We'll have to follow, I mean, we've just exhausted my knowledge on the subject, so we can follow up.
We have someone who seems to be volunteering to offer an answer.
Oh, thank you.
Perhaps you can enlighten us.
Hi, Rachel Roberts, Deputy Director of Code Enforcement. I do know that any businesses selling tobacco in the state of California have to get a license through the state, and then also the license with our city and our division. We do the annual licensing, and with that comes an inspection, at least one annual inspection, where we go out to the premises and ensure they're adhering to all of the regulations that we have here in San Jose. And if there are any issues, then we pursue, you know, open a case and pursue those violations until they're remedied. We also used to have a decoy program that we partnered with the county, up until 2016, where the funding for that ceased. But between 2011 and 2016, we were performing decoy operations, and where we were sending in youth to attempt to purchase tobacco, and we were able to cite some businesses for violating that.
So for the last three years, we haven't sent in any decoys?
That is correct, just specifically because that program ceased and the funding was no longer there. We have proactively, before even this memo, over the past year, been looking at re-establishing that program, as we understand, I believe probably with some of the funding we were referring to earlier regarding the state funding that's coming down, that we could potentially tap into that to help support those efforts. So we are looking into re-establishing that program. And as far as the 18 overestablishments, I was trying to go back through the memos to kind of figure out what the nexus, in addition to what I provided, but I do know for today's businesses, that would apply. We do have 44 that currently have an exemption, and those are mostly your hookah lounges, your bars, card clubs, where just typically those uses wouldn't allow 18 and, younger than 18 to begin with, so.
And I'm not sure what the difference is between the city license and the city tax, because we have a tax. Is it the same thing?
We only deal with the licensing, that was the...
So it's an actual license from the city?
Yeah, we added that that section was a new section of the ordinance to Title VI in 2009.
No, I'm very supportive of this item, and I'm very supportive of moving it to the priority and looking at number three. I'm not a big supporter of bans, and, to be quite frank, I don't think bans have worked in the past to curtail marijuana use. I don't think bans have worked in the past on alcohol, and I know that we cannot stop something permanently if there's enough people that want to do it. But I am supportive of enforcing, very much enforcing, and I want to look into ways to enforce the laws that we, that, you know, for me, it's not good enough to pass a law, and it's not good enough, but we have to actually put some teeth behind it and enforce it. So if we are going to do this permitting, I want us to have a secret shopper program like we used to in the old days, because we need to get, at a minimum, the bad actors out of business. And it's a shame that it's been dropped for the last three years, and...
Just to clarify, I believe the source of funding was grant funding, wasn't it?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, so there was, this was, I believe, a partnership we had with the county?
Yes, that's right.
Yes, and it's obviously a public health issue, and that's why we had funding.
Yeah, so we're in parallel looking at whether, under our existing, because it's a fee-for-service program, so we're under Prop 26, you know, that limits what we can do with the funding for that program, but we are looking to see if decoys would fall under that umbrella, or if we need to continue to look for an outside source. But I should add that the ordinance does allow us to shut down a business if they are not meeting, you know, the regulations. We substantiated sufficiently, that is the best next step.
Thank you. And can I make an addition to the motion, to ask the county to re-implement funding to implement the actual, the secret shopper program, so that we can enforce our existing laws until such time as we can get through some of the stuff in the priority setting? Would that be amicable for the motion maker?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So you're asking for us to ask the county?
To fund the secret shopper program.
To refund this.
Yeah, because it's a healthcare issue, it's a health issue.
Sure.
And I don't want it to stop the, I just want to ask, I'm not saying, you know, but I do, I would like to get enforcement right away, rather than waiting for laws to be developed. Let's enforce the laws that we have on the books now, that way we can get some of the bad actors out of the way, and hopefully start stemming the epidemic immediately, rather than waiting for other things to happen. Okay.
So, I'm sorry.
Councilmember?
So Francis, my chief of staff, just informed me that they're actually doing the, that's where they got the study from. So if you look at my memo, the 23% of the kiddos that were sold the product, that's where they got the stats from. So they're doing it on a yearly basis. So what I believe we need to do is coordinate with the county to find out who are those bad actors, so that we can...
And shut them down.
So that we can go after them, and decide what our next steps are, when it's taking place here in the city of San Jose.
Yeah, well...
We can't do anything in Campbell, we can't do anything in Palo Alto, but if it's happening here in San Jose, let them know that they're acting in bad faith, and shut them down.
Yeah, I, well, whatever information leaves, maybe, they're coming back on next week, if we can ask the county what they're currently doing, and if they're not currently doing it, ask them for funding to do it. Thank you, thank you very much, Councilmember Carrasco.
Okay. Any other comments, then? All right, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I...
Thank you.
That's, thank you. Okay, I think we're on to open forum, is that right?
No, there's one more item.
Oh, forgive me.
An amendment to one of the smart cities agenda.
Oh, yes.
So moved.
Second, that's on the Smart City Committee Agenda. Sir, if you have something, please give it to the clerk, thank you. The meeting's not, the meeting's not over.
The meeting's...
Yeah, thank you, sir. All right, so on this item, there's a motion from Councilmember Davis, is that right? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Okay, on to open forum, Mr. Romer, you've been very patiently sitting in the back.
By the way, the vaping is 21, how they seem.
Sir, the meeting's still continuing, please leave. Thank you. Mr. Romer?
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly update you on the chocolate community meeting, the discussion, and after I spoke to you at the end of August about our concerns, the school, we waited about a week to hear from staff, but nobody reached out. So I emailed John Rissos, the head of the DOT, to ask what's going on, and John responded with the chocolate project manager in Cisneros, "Robin, I was not aware that you spoke at Rules Committee, so I was unaware of your concern with the location. The meeting is scheduled on 9/24 at the Berias Community Center/Library. I'm not sure what your concern is for that location, but the city conducts many public meetings for council district, for any Berias area in this location." So I'm not sure what happened exactly, but in any case, we decided instead of waiting for staff to organize a meeting and inviting us, we'll just switch around and reorganize the meeting and invited staff. So the meeting is going to be next Thursday at the 26th, at 6:00 PM at the school. You and staff is very much invited to join. The school will provide childcare and translations to Spanish and Vietnamese, trying to do this by the book. But there's still one problem. I emailed staff more than a week ago about this, and invited them to come, and I have not heard back from them. So at this point, we don't know if anybody from staff is attending the community meeting at the school. And I get it, going into a community saying, hey, we want to do this project here, it's potentially going to harm your kids, what do you think about it? Not the most comfortable discussion to have. But if staff is so uncomfortable about this, maybe they shouldn't be pushing for this project to begin with. And in any case, the order that just came out shows that commute times across, they say 880, the reason we're doing this, the reason we're spending millions of dollars on this, or want to, and the reason we're having these discussions, will reduce commute times across 880 by seven, by less than 17 seconds on average, 17 seconds.
Bless you.
That is what we're going.
Mr. Romer, could you stay for a moment after the meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, the meeting's adjourned, thank you.